Good evening, everyone. I'll call the City Council to order at 8:00 on Monday evening, February 24th, 2025. This meeting is being recorded. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. We have 17 items on this evening's agenda, and due to the planning board hearing on... No, maybe not. We'll see. If Councilor Brown talks slow on the minute approval, it might work okay. Let the clerk read Agenda Item Number One.
Let me find my agenda, sir. Take a little bit more time.
There you go.
Minutes of the City Council Meeting, February 10th, 2025.
Councilor Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to accept and place on file the minutes of the City Council meeting from February 10th, 2025.
Thank you, Councilor Brown.
Thank you.
Motion's made and seconded to accept and place on file the minutes from our last meeting. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Oppose, the minutes are filed 10-0. And is the applicant here for... I don't see the applicant yet. I'll entertain a motion to change, move up our schedule if we can take Item Four... Actually, no. We'll take Item Three, the McGee Special Permit Modification. So I'll entertain a motion to move up Agenda Item Number Three. Motion's made, second to move up Agenda Item Number Three. Any discussion on the motion? Are those in favor? Oppose. We will now take up Agenda Item Number Three.
Now is the time for the public hearing on the application for amendment to a special permit from 339 Boston Post Road Owner LLC to modify a condition of an existing special permit to alter the language relative to certain traffic calming improvements for the project being built at 339 Boston Post Road East, Order Number 25-109354.
Okay, this special permit we've taken up in four stages. First, with the public speaking in favor. Second, questions from the public. Third, public speaking in opposition. Fourth, questions from the council. So we'll open the first part of the public hearing with the public speaking in favor, starting with the applicant, and we will be limiting questions and opposition to three minutes of speaking time, as well as those speaking in favor. So with that, if the applicant wants to come on up, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, I'm Cara Chicarelli with the Procopio Companies. The address of the property is 339 Boston Post Road. And I have with me Mike Maduno, our design lead at the Procopio Companies, and then Drew Talco with VAI, our traffic engineer for this project. So we have a few slides to just walk you through what we're proposing here, and then we'll take questions as you stated.
Thanks, Cara.
So first slide, Steve, after this one. So our property is called VESA. It's an apartment complex at 339 Boston Post Road. And just to orient everyone, this is our site here. You see the three buildings there. For those of you who have driven past the site, we are well underway with construction with all three buildings being framed right now. The project's going to deliver this fall in phases, so September, October, and November are our opening dates for those three buildings, starting with Building One on the right of the screen, then Building Three in the rear of the site, and then Building Two there in the center of the site. So next slide, please. This is the current special permit language that we're proposing to modify.
So just so you know, Cara, it takes a little bit of time for the slide. You say change the slide. It takes a couple seconds, so don't get nervous. It's coming.
All right, go slow.
Yes, thank you.
So this is the current special permit language, and it just calls for us to install some traffic calming improvements along Route 20, including two radar speed signs and then rapid flashing beacons at the crosswalk. And basically, we're proposing a payment in lieu of install of these signs, and I'll talk about why we're doing that in a few minutes. So next slide. Once that pops up, it will be a map showing... Oh, it does take a little time. It'll be a little map showing our site, as well as the locations of the equipment that we're talking about. So on the left there, you have the radar speed sign west of Victoria Lane, right by Jolene Villages. On the right, you have the radar speed sign east of Village Drive, over by the condominiums. And then the yellow marker there shows where the crosswalk is planned, right across from the storage facility. And then the rapid flashing beacons would be at that crosswalk. And then the picture in the corner is just a radar speed sign. I'm sure that you've seen these all around. They're just those digital signs that tell drivers how fast they're going in comparison to the speed limit to encourage them to slow down and go the speed limit. So next slide, please. So we believe that Route 20 could certainly benefit from these radar speed signs, and we were fully prepared to install these speed signs. So this is our initial application to MassDOT. As a state highway, Route 20, you require a permit and approval from MassDOT to put any infrastructure along that roadway. So we had proposed the two signs as required by the special permit in the two locations required. So you can see there on the left, again, over by Victoria Lane, and then on the right, over by Village Drive. And then the next slide, please. This just shows the rapid flashing beacons. So those have already been installed by MassDOT as part of the ongoing project. That crosswalk is being installed as part of MassDOT's project right across from the storage facility, and the crosswalk will be installed next as soon as the final paving with that project is done, which we understand to be this spring. So the flashing beacons are not an issue. It's the radar speed signs that MassDOT is not allowing us to install. So next slide, please. So here is just the coordination that we had with MassDOT over these signs. We submitted our initial permit application back in March of last year, and then received the first round of comments from DOT telling us to remove the radar speed signs. We then consulted with VAI, our traffic consultant, and tried to appeal to MassDOT, ask them to reconsider. When that didn't work, we then went to the city engineer, Tom DiPiercio, to see if he could elevate the issue with MassDOT through the city's contacts. So he did reach out to the district engineer at DOT, also requesting the radar speed signs. And then they emailed back the email that you have here, which is included with our application, again, just denying that they would put the signs in, not allowing us to submit those as part of our permit, and saying that once the work in Route 20 is done, they'll consider doing a traffic study at that time and reconsider it at a later date. So it just became clear to us that we were not going to be able to get those as part of our permit, so we removed them from the permit and proceeded with our application, and then got our DOT permit in October. So last slide is just our amended permit language. So we're proposing to provide a payment to the city in the amount of $25,000 for its use in the future installation of these radar speed signs, assuming that MassDOT allows that, or to use it for other improvements in the vicinity of the site. For those of you who are familiar with our special permit, we do have a condition that six months after our project concludes, we'll be doing a whole traffic study, and we'll be asking the DOT to reconsider some other traffic improvements that were considered in this area, so a traffic signal at our entrance. So we're happy to ask DOT to reconsider the radar speed signs at that time, and we wanted to give the funds for you to be able to accomplish that whenever you get the approval to do so. And that is it from us, and I will hand it over to you and open up for questions.
Thank you, Cara. Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Questions from the public? Any members of the public have any questions? Please come on up, state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. My name is Bill Gately from 12 Village Drive, across the street from the new Procopio site. My question, and it's interesting to learn what you talked about, is that the $25,000 payment is really just in lieu of these, whether they're portable or permanently mounted, flashing speed signs, and that the traffic light is still hoped for.
Correct. Yes. So the traffic light, as part of our special permit, we've already made other payments to the city for the traffic light. So we've given the city $200,000 for the traffic light, $20,000 for shared transportation, funding shared transportation options, $20,000 for the recreational trail to go over the sewer property, and then $35,000 for the sewer pump station. So these radar speed signs would have been installed as part of our project, but now that DOT is not allowing us to, we're proposing this additional $25,000 to cover the cost of those radar speed signs, so that they can be added in the future. But it doesn't impact the traffic signal, which we'll still push for as well.
Right. That's the one that we really need.
Yes.
Okay. Thanks a lot.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you, Bill. Any other members of the public have questions?
Good evening. I'm Steve Peck. I live at 64 Victoria Lane. I'm going to butter to this property. And I just heard you say that you've given the city money for a trail to cross over the sewer property. Is that going to connect to a trail on the property now at 339?
I'm not 100% sure.
If I could, Steve, we want to focus this on the actual change to the special permit. This isn't litigating all the conditions. We're happy to answer that out. We're happy to answer that outside of this, but if you've got conditions on this, we'll be happy to address those, Steve.
When you mentioned that, I was just wondering, because I had heard that trail was going to not be done.
I would just check up with Priscilla Ryder of Conservation, she'll be able to tell you that, Steve. Any other members of the public have any questions? Any members of the public have questions? Any members of the public have questions? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Questions from the city councilors? Councilor Ficello?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a very quick question about the speed signs. Did you folks ever reach a point where you were getting a quote for these signs, or if you had thought about, you know, what the cost of these signs might be? Just because I'm trying to understand the $25,000. To me, it makes sense, but I just wanted to see kind of what's on your end.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you for the question. So the Procopio Companies has a development group, and we also have an in-house construction team. So our construction team is actually building the project now. So we had them provide a cost estimate of what they would charge if they were to construct these for someone else, and it was $17,000. And then we added on to that to account for the passage of time, and just assuming other contractors might have variations in pricing.
No, it sounds good, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Thank you, Councilor Ficello. Any other councils have any questions? Councilor Oram?
I almost had the same question, but has that been run by our people to make sure the $25,000 is appropriate?
I'm not sure. Has the city engineer reviewed the special permit amendment application, or?
So if I could, so Mr. DePirseo is aware of what's going on, he acknowledges, because he's been trying, working with Procopio, to try to get the state to put up the signs, so he's aware of all this, and the dollar figure is about what it would cost to buy the signs and then subsequently install them. Okay. Thank you, thank you both.
Yes.
Thank you, Councilor Oram. Any other questions from the councilors? Councilor Roby?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to clarify, your change to the permit says that within 30 days of the expiration of the appeal period, so you're talking about this specific appeal, so once the city council approves this, which would be relatively soon, 30 days later, you would write that check.
Correct, exactly.
Which then is going to sit there for the potentially two years before the state does its study. So I'm just throwing out there that once this comes down, I will make sure that there's language added to that this goes to a specific fund, so that it doesn't go into free cash and lost in the shuffle, so that it stays in the accounting for its specific purpose.
That's correct, Councilor Oram. So if this goes through Urban Affairs, we would add that additional language, so that the funds that we receive will go into the one where they put $240,000 of other mitigation into that account. We have that set up, and if, councilors, remember that was a transfer we did a while back, so. Any other questions from the city councilors? Questions from the city councilors? Questions from the city councilors? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing and the entire public hearing, and this is in Urban Affairs. Thank you, Cara, thank you, gentlemen.
Yeah.
We will go back to Agenda Item...we need time to reset your...
Go back to Agenda, the PowerPoint that they have, because that's what they use for the planning board. There's a PowerPoint one. Sorry. There you go.
Okay, Agenda Item Number Two.
Now is the time for the public, reschedule public hearing on the proposed zoning map amendment for Ramundo Neto, owner of 36 Jefferson Street, to rezone 36 Jefferson Street, identified as Map 56, parcel 153 from Residence B to Neighborhood Business District, Order Number
Again, this public hearing will take it up in four stages: public speaking in favor, questions from the public, public speaking in opposition, and then questions from the city council. And again, reminder, comments will be limited to three minutes. We will ask the applicant to come on up. So we'll open the first part of the public hearing, which is the public speaking in favor. Please state your name and address for the record, so come on up.
So, good evening, councilors, thank you so much for having us tonight. My name is James McMahon, I'm appearing here as counsel for Ramundo Neto, proponent of this project at 36 Jefferson Street. We'd like to ask your graciousness in allowing us to continue this public hearing. We are going to be making some changes to the proposal based off feedback we received at the planning board, and we would like to present the same comprehensive project to both the council and the planning board. Our next planning board hearing is March 10th, and we would respectfully request a continuance to pass the 10th, so that we would be able to present the same information to both the council and the planning board.
So Attorney McMahon, would you want it on the 10th, or would you want it on the next meeting on the 24th?
On the 10th should be fine.
Okay.
That would be fantastic.
There's been the request from the applicant to change or continue the public hearing to March 10th. Any questions? Councilor Roby?
Thank you, Mr. President. I understand their desire to move this forward. I just would urge once again, as we go through zoning changes, we typically have a proposal from the proponent. That proposal means absolutely nothing. You have to remember that. Our focus is the rezoning. Is the rezoning appropriate? I think we can continue tonight with the discussion on the rezoning and be able to move forward regardless of what the planning board may see when they look at the project that may be built, if the rezoning is allowed. So I would not support a continuation.
Any comments from the councilors? So I need a motion from somebody to do something.
Point of order?
Counselor Dusset.
Thank you very much. Hypothetically, if the applicant was going to change it, so it would require, let's say, a special permit versus a zoning change, would that cancel this one, and we have to resubmit?
No, I'm going to speak on behalf of the applicant, and he can...
That's why it's a point of order, sir.
Correctly, so, that's all right. So the applicant presented to the planning board, and there were a lot of comments on the project. Counselor Roby is correct, this is a zoning change. And it's hard for the councilors at times, because when we're looking at a zoning change, everybody thinks of the shiny rock that's in front of them, that's the particular one. But a zoning change, anything that's allowed by that potentially new zone can then go in. And I'll use the example of one Maple Terrace that we just did last week, right? I mean, applicant wants a three-family house, but it could be much larger than that, because the zoning allows it. So to answer your question, it has nothing to do with a special permit at this point. This is strictly just a zoning change.
I understand. No, my question was hypothetically, if he decides that what he needs, what he wants to get done could be done as a special permit instead of changing the zoning, would that then, would he withdraw this order?
So they can buy special permit, currently put in, not 20 units, probably four, because it's dimensional restricted, is what they're current, in an RB zone, so you've got to go to all the double-secret math in the zoning tables to find out how big a structure, but it's probably, if I heard the applicant correct, probably about four units, versus if you change to the NB, your Neighborhood Business District zone, those tolerances are a lot smaller, and the requirements are a lot lenient to go higher and more dense, and less open space. So that's it. Special permit's going to be required in either case, whether it's RB with multifamily housing, or NB with multifamily housing.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
So the applicant's requested a change of date in the zoning ordinance, so I'm happy to entertain that, but I need a motion to do that. Counselor Ryder?
So move, Mr. President.
Motion's made and seconded to extend the zoning change public hearing to March 10th. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, President makes seven, opposed. One, two, three, the motion does carry, the public hearing will be continued until Monday, March 10th at 8:00 PM.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Now is the time for the public hearing on the application for special permit from McDonald's USA LLC for a proposed restaurant with drive-through facility used within the Wayside District at 735 Boston Post Road East, Order Number 25-109353.
Again, this public hearing we've taken up in four stages: public speaking in favor, starting with the applicant, questions from the public, public speaking in opposition. Oh, Counselor Dusset?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Please form the record that I'm accusing myself from this public hearing.
We will let the record reflect that you will not be participating in this public hearing or the voting on this particular project. So again, the public hearing taken up in four stages: public speaking in favor, questions from the public, public speaking in opposition, and questions from the city council. We'll limit comments to three minutes, and I will ask, open the first part, which is the public speaking in favor, starting with the applicant. Please come on up and state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Anne Soboleski, I'm here on behalf of the applicant McDonald's USA. I'm here to give you a little bit of an overview for this particular project. This site requires a special permit for the drive-through that we're proposing. It is in the Wayside Zoning District, and the restaurant use itself is allowed by right, but the drive-through is not. So this property currently is vacant, it has been vacant for quite some time. It has a building located on it that is not being used, and it also has towards the front, towards Boston Post Road, a former foundation that exists with fencing around it on the site. So our proposal is to remove the foundation for that abandoned structure, remove the existing building, redesign the site so that it complies with the Wayside Zoning District requirements in terms of landscaping, in terms of the location of the parking, and construct a new building. The building will be 3,830 square feet, and it will have 38 seats. There will be no parking located in front of the building, the parking is on the sides and in the rear. The proposed drive-through is located in the interior of the site as well. So looking at the requirements for a special permit for the drive-through, you know, we believe that this use is consistent with the character of the other uses in the area. There is a Taco Bell with a drive-through proximate to this particular use. It will provide additional restaurant facilities in this area, it will activate a site that is currently not being used for anything, will provide some economic opportunities, both in terms of the redevelopment and the increased taxes that that will provide, as well as jobs. So in terms of the site plan, excuse me, the special permit requirement, we believe it would be advantageous to the community. And the drive-through is necessary, because there are only 38 seats in the building. We've shrunk the size of the building to increase the landscaping around it, make it more attractive, but in order to make the use economical, we need the drive-through for it to work. And then looking at the other requirements for the use, for the table of uses, the drive-through is located in the interior of the site, it is set back, we don't have any abutting residential properties, and so we believe we also meet the requirements at 650 18A 31 for this particular use. The last thing that I will say before turning it over to the project engineer is we sent out 184 abutter notifications about this public hearing. In response to those, I was contacted by one abutter who reached out to say that she was in favor of the project, she supported the McDonald's, but we did not hear back from the other 183 notices that we sent out. With me is Luke DiStefano of Bowler Engineering, who will provide some specific details about the project. And then after that, I have Sean Kelly of Chapel, who will be speaking about our traffic study. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. For the record, Luke DiStefano with Bowler, Westboro, Massachusetts. What I'd like to do is just elaborate a little bit more on what council said relative to the project, touch on existing conditions briefly, proposed conditions, answer any questions if there are any, or turn it over to Sean to talk a little bit about traffic. I'm sure you're all familiar with the site, 735 Boston Post Road East, former Joy Asia location is noted, it's a vacant roughly 8,000-square-foot building with a, what we don't understand, a foundation in the northeast corner of the lot that is fenced in, but, you know, certainly not something we would typically like to see on a property. The applicant is looking to completely raise and rebuild that entire lot, so everything on the property will be demolished, removed, and replaced with what you see on the screens, which is, as noted, a roughly 3,800-square-foot McDonald's restaurant with a drive-through, double-drive-through facility, pretty similar to pretty much every McDonald's you've seen recently constructed in the last 10, 15 years. As noted, the restaurant will have 38 seats, it will be serviced by 36 parking spaces located primarily on the eastern and western sides of the property, with a small handful of parking spaces located to the south or behind the building. Access to the property will remain pretty much as it is today, with one full movement curb cut off of Boston Post Road, and a second full movement, what I'll refer to as a curb cut, at the rear of the property, which basically accesses a connector lane between the two plazas on either side of the property. As you can see, we've taken a lot of care to provide as much landscaping as possible under existing conditions, roughly 50% of the site is impervious, and 50% is green space. Under the proposed conditions, we are looking at reducing the impervious cover by about 15% or about 17,500 square feet. We've also proposed a large, approximately 30-foot-wide landscape buffer in the front of the property. There had been some initial discussions where there was parking between the building and Boston Post Road. It was determined to have that parking removed. We still comply with zoning, which allowed us to create a much larger landscape island along the right-of-way. We've also got significant landscaping on the north, or on the east and west sides, as well as the south side of the property. We also, as you can see on the rendering, are proposing 26 ornamental trees and one canopy tree, so it's not just low-level ground cover that we're proposing for landscaping, it's something that's really going to enhance the property over the existing condition. Utilities are all going to be provided to the site, with the exception of natural gas. The building will be an entirely electric building, but we will have water, we will have electric, communications, sanitary sewer. And then one of the other major improvements to the site over the existing conditions relates to stormwater management. Under the existing conditions, we don't really know what happens with the stormwater, but we know it's collected and conveyed into a drainage system that runs into the easterly abutting property, or to the top of the page. Under the proposed condition, we are going to collect all of the runoff from the property, deep-sump hooded catch basins, which will convey any impervious stormwater, rainfall into a proprietary stormwater quality unit, which will pretreat and remove all of the sediment prior to then connecting back into the existing drainage structure. But under the proposed condition, we will have a net decrease in not only the runoff rates for all design storms up to and including the 100-year, but the volumes as well. So again, a significant improvement to the property over what's there today. And the last thing I'd like to touch on is lighting. If you've had an opportunity to review the lighting plan, you'll see that the lighting is very muted, it's designed to put light where we want it, which is in parking areas and around the drivable portions of the... drivable portions of the site. We're only proposing seven yard lights around the entire property, and we have basically zero-foot candle trespass on any property line. So you're going to get lighting where you want it and not lighting onto the abutting properties and/or abutting rights-of-way. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, or I can turn it over to Sean, who can talk a little bit about traffic.
Yeah, we'll turn it over to Sean. Now, thanks.
Good evening, Mr. President and members of the council. For the record, Sean Kelly with Chapel Engineering out of Marlborough, Massachusetts. On behalf of the project team, thank you again for having us before you tonight. If it pleases the council, I'd like to do is just take a few minutes to walk you through our traffic study, how it was conducted, what our findings were, what our recommendations are, then I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. Advance one slide. So again, I think, you know, Luke did a great job describing the project site. Again, the site is shown in yellow on this map. It's a three-acre site located on the southern side of Boston Post Road, which is state number Route 20. The project does abut state highway, and as such, we will be required to get an access permit from Mass DOT for the project. We did our study in conformance with all state and industry guidelines. The first stages, we went out and did some traffic counts. We looked at traffic on a daily basis, and we also looked at traffic during peak hours. And the intersections that we looked at were the two traffic signals immediately to the east and west of us at the Senza Boulevard, then also at the Raytheon entrance, and then also our front door. What the data shows is that today, Boston Post Road carries about 16,500 cars on a weekday, about 15,500 on a Saturday, not remarkably different. Peak hour flows range from about 1,000 in the morning to around 13:50 on the PM on Saturday. Traffic is more directional during the weekdays. You can imagine people commuting their first of the Saturday where it's about a 50/50 split. Oh, yeah, that's right, the delay. As part of our assessment, we also looked at vehicle speeds along Boston Post Road. It's critical to understand the speed of traffic because that ultimately defines how much site distance you need to ensure safe access. So we went out and did a speed study over the course of an entire number of days, and what we found was that the posted speeds, 35, typically the average speed was surprisingly pretty close to the posted speed limit, and in some instances, a little lower, probably due to the presence of the traffic signals. But the 85th percentile speed, which ranged from 37 to 40 miles an hour, is what we utilize to identify the required site distances. And what those higher speeds showed is that with the clearing of vegetation that currently exists along our frontage, we meet the requirements to provide safe access. The next thing that we did is we took a look at the trip generation for the project. And the way that we identify the trip generation is we utilize data that's published by what's known as the Institute of Transportation Engineers, or the ITE. The ITE has published a number of editions of what's known as the Trip Generation Manual, where based on traffic counts done at similar facilities, they provide data that lets you estimate with a good deal of accuracy how much a project will generate based on what existing similar facilities do. And what the data shows is that, you know, in terms of total trips, McDonald's of this size typically does about 170 trips during that morning peak hour, the breakfast time, if you will, about 130 peak hour trips during the, we call the weekday evening commuter peak, which would be your dinnertime hours. And then the busiest time really is the Saturday midday, which is when people are out shopping. And during that time period, it's about 210 trips. When I talk about the trips, these, so if I say 210, I'm not saying 210 customers. That's basically about 105 customers in and 105 customers out. Not all of this traffic is new to the area. There are two components, given the location of the site and the corridor that it's on, that pull traffic into this project that already exists out there today. And the first component of that is what we call internal trips. And anytime that you have a restaurant-type use that's surrounded by complementary retail and commercial uses, what typically happens is some of the customers that shop there will frequent the restaurant as part of their trip. So, you know, we have Staples, we have Dollar Tree, we have a Home Depot, there's a Target, and all of those uses have a connection to the site that doesn't require you to go out onto Boston Post Road. You can make those trips internally. The ITE data says it's just under 30% typically for a project of this type would be internal. We've conservatively only used a 20% internal capture. And again, these would be your contractors at Home Depot in the morning that are, you know, grabbing McMuffin and coffee on their way out as they get back to the corridor. The other component is what we call pass-by trips, and these are trips that do come from Boston Post Road, but they're already traveling along the corridor. And again, the ITE data says that about 55% of trips are pass-by in nature. We've gone with a lower 50% ratio, and again, that's 50% of the external trips, so we've netted out the 20% internal, so it's really about 40%. And when you net all that out, what it comes up to is that, you know, during the peak hours in terms of new traffic, in the morning, you're looking at about, you know, 35 new trips in, 35 out, and the weekday evening peak hour, it's more in the range of 25 in and 25 out, and then the busiest would be that Saturday midday when you're in the range of about 40 in and 40 out. Not all of these trips come and go from the same area, so, you know, half are going to come from the east, half from the west, or some percentage in that vicinity during peak hours. So what it really comes down to is that any given segment of Boston Post Road will experience about a little less than one new trip per minute on average during the busiest hours of road activity. And again, that's assuming the conservative lower pass-by and internal. We've looked at the impact that this traffic has on operations, and frankly, it's fairly minimal. All of the traffic signals that we looked at, the delays are projected to increase by less than one second per vehicle due to the project. So, you know, conclusions and recommendations, again, I won't beat a dead horse, but again, the volumes are fairly low. The impact in terms of operations are also fairly low. The sightlines that are out there following the clearing of the vegetation meet the required distances. We've looked at the proposed parking supply, and that's adequate. It meets the requirements as defined by the ITE. We've looked at the drive-through lane. The drive-through lane storage is appropriate to accommodate not only the average queuing, but also the peak queuing that's anticipated. And ultimately, it's a benefit to have the two lanes because you split that queue into two drive-through lanes versus having it all stacked in one. And really, our recommendations are focused exclusively on elements of the site access and circulation, putting up stop signs, painted center lines, directional pavement markings on the driveway, and things of that nature. And again, just to reiterate, this project will require an access permit from Mass DOT's District III office, so there will be another set of review from the engineers that work for the state to get our state permit. And that's really all I have for tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions that members of the council may have.
Thank you, Sean. And does that conclude the presentation, or is there anything else you'd like to say?
No, that concludes our presentation, but I would, if you could put up the elevation with the landscaping, just so that everybody can see what it is actually going to look like. That would be great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ann. With that, are there any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Any other members of the public speaking in favor? Hearing none, I'll close that portion of the public hearing. Questions from the public? Questions from the public?
Thank you for the presentation. I'm Steve Peck. I live at 64 Victoria. I'm not a director abutter, but I live right down the street. I'm wondering when this traffic study was done?
We completed our study in December of 2024, and the traffic counts that were the basis of the study were done in November of 2024.
Thank you. Right in the middle of the construction on Route 20 that has been in progress, and I think has, may have a large impact on what we will see in a year when this road is finished. And that particular spot has been under construction heavily, and between two and three lanes at different times. So I'm not sure that your study will be what we see. But in any case, I know the cut coming out from the Staples lot only allows a right turn, does not allow for a left turn. Would you anticipate people pulling out of here, making a left turn or going west on Route 20?
We are not proposing any restrictions, so yes, you would be able to make a left out of this driveway, similar to what was allowed when the prior restaurant was there. Yes.
Okay. And when do you plan to start construction?
Basically, as soon as we get permits.
I'm wondering whether you intend to rip up the new road that they just will have completed this spring.
So I'll help you though, that, so all the connections are already there to where the Joy Asia was. They'll just be tapping into those. They will not be going into, and you can correct me, Luke, they will not be going into the new road.
Okay. Since there's going to be a bike lane and sidewalks, I encourage and thank you. How big will the sign be? And will it say billions and billions? Never mind, silly question.
Thank you, Steve.
Question for signage?
You, I mean, you'll have to go for a sign permit.
Correct. I think they're looking at a couple of wall signs that are relatively small, as well as a pylon sign, which I think is 32 square feet, if I'm not mistaken. So relatively small for a typical use like this.
Thanks, Steve. Any other questions?
David O'Neil, 24 Arcadia Circle.
I apologize. I just missed your name, that's all.
Sure, David O'Neil.
David O'Neil, thank you, David.
24 Arcadia Circle, speak for a bunch of residents here from Arcadia Circle where a butter is right against this whole area. I looked through the document. You're going to be open from 5:00 AM to 2:00 AM?
Yes, the request is from 5:00 AM to 2:00 AM. The Taco Bell is open from 7:00 AM to 2:00 AM, and they don't serve breakfast. And then there is another McDonald's at a different address that has unlimited hours. So we feel that the 5:00 AM to 2:00 AM is appropriate, particularly given the fact that the Taco Bell is 7 to 2. And I'd also say, you know, it is, everything on this site is centrally located away from the abutting properties to keep any, you know, noise issues within the property.
The issue I'm seeing here is you say garbage vehicles one times per day during business hours, which those would be those hours, as well as delivery vehicles, 18-wheeler, et cetera, during the same timeframe. I'm worried about noise, excess noise and light, because we already have plenty of that issue already with Home Depot, Staples, Dollar Tree. We don't need another one with more noise and light pollution. So I don't know how that's going to happen when you expect these delivery trucks and garbage trucks to come through.
Yeah, I can't speak specifically as to when the garbage trucks would come through to serve the property. That will have to be something that's, you know, contracted with the garbage disposal company once the property is operational. But again, I would say we have designed this in terms, as Luke was saying, with respect to the lighting, right? We've designed this to keep things on the site, and it is located up close to the road and central to the property. So we don't realistically believe that it's going to create any sort of noise issues for residential properties located behind it, given the design and given the distances involved. But I can't tell you exactly when the garbage trucks are going to come and take the garbage out.
David, I'll help you. So the Urban Affairs Chair is here. She hears that typically in a lot of our special permits, we'll assign times for, you know, no trash pickup prior to a certain hour or later than a certain hour. So I'm sure the Urban Affairs Chair hears that and will make sure that's taken.
Okay, very good. Just as a side note, Dollar Tree was starting to do its 6:00 AM garbage stuff right behind us, making all kinds of noise, until I had to go down and deal with that. But, so I just want people to be cognizant of that. For hours of, what hours of the day for construction? Do we have, is that something to be considered as well?
Again, I'll just, typically, it's usually a 7 to 7 construction timeframe. That's usually standard in most of our permits, Dave.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome, David. Any other questions from the public? Questions from the public? Any questions from the public? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Come on up, Dave.
David O'Neil, 24 Arcadia Circle. So we've lived here since 1993. We have two McDonald's already in the city, one at the Apex, one over at Route 85. This will be the third one within the city limits. We already have noise from a church down the street that starts up at 7:00 AM and makes all kinds of subway for noise. Then we have Home Depot with their trucks that are idling that shouldn't be overnight and so forth. That's always an issue. We call the police on them. And also at the dump at the post-routal park. So there's like a noise and pollution thing going on already in this area. What would be great, and I know McDonald's wants to come in, if we have a regular restaurant coming in instead of a fast-food place, the fast-food place, you're in and out of there, there's more traffic, constant flow, versus a regular restaurant, they come in, stay for a while, and they leave. Less traffic, less noise. I'm also concerned with the drive-through, the double-drive-through and noise from that. Are we going to hear, can I take your pleas, you know, all the way in the neighborhood? Is that going to be swept down as an issue? Let's see. Let's try the other things, because my neighbor here wanted me to say a couple of things too about it. In fact, over the years in the same area, I myself personally have to go down and kick out, again, overnight truckers, delivery trucks and so forth from Home Depot and Staples staying in these parking lots, which is the same, and Joy Asia parking lot, to kick them out at 2:00 AM and so forth. The mayor, Vigent, years ago, he got wind of it and said, this guy's going to get himself killed, and he had them put up signs everywhere saying, no overnight truck, 18-wheeler parking and so forth. And that was great for a while until those signs got knocked down during snowstorms or whatever. And so it's still an issue with, you know, all these excess noise and light is the biggest thing. So that's what we're really concerned with being a butters, is we already have a noise and light problem. We don't want to add to that some more. So I don't know if McDonald's people will be cognizant of that coming in, that, you know, we're already kind of at our wits' end a little bit with what we got going on in that, in the neighborhood already. That's it.
Thank you, David. Any other members of the public speaking in opposition? Any other members of the public speaking in opposition? Any members of the public speaking in opposition? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing. Questions from the city councilors? Questions? Councilor Nevin?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for your presentation here tonight. I'm happy to see some of the improvements that you're talking about bringing into the site that I think it is sorely needed. I think we can all agree, since Joy Asia has closed, it has kind of sat there, especially the stormwater. So I think that's something that's very interesting. It was touched upon briefly, and I just want to kind of put a bug out there. As the president mentioned, you will have to go for a sign permit. This is in the Wayside District. I appreciate that you guys are looking at and following the requirements for landscaping and construction, but also ask that as you're starting to think about signs, you think about the signs that are supposed to be in the Wayside District, not the signs that are currently in the Wayside District. You know, the Wayside District, even though it was adopted before I got here, it was meant to really improve that part of the city as a gateway to the city. And oftentimes, we are looking at signs that are backlit and don't kind of fit into what the overall intent of that will be. We're often put in the position of making a decision, you know, to be fair for people who are getting their businesses off the ground. I think I can safely argue that people are aware of McDonald's. Your reputation precedes you, and so a sign that conforms to those regulations, I think, would be appreciated by the intent of the district. So I ask you to think about that and just re-highlight, we'll continue this discussion as the people mention their concerns when you come to urban. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Nevin. Councilor Orem?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening. I have a couple of questions, and I'll probably have more when the Urban Affairs meeting occurs. The first one is during construction. I'm sure you've already been told this, that there'll be need for during demolition as well as construction for road and control. Not for sure if you're going to tear up any of the dirt. It sounds like you might be. Who knows if there's burrows out there and so forth? So that'll be something that I have a feeling you're going to be required to do that when you come in for the permit, but also something to be aware of. We've had seen issues with other large, not this small, but other larger projects that created a road and issue in our city. So it's very important that you stay aware of that through that process. The sign... The signage which was just mentioned, I have concerns with businesses that are exiting onto a major route such as Route 20. It's great for your business, you've got a lot of traffic going by, especially left turnout, which was mentioned by one of our residents. I would ask, you have a very good situation here, you have a back exit, and that's what we were trying to create with the Wayside District, is connecting all the businesses through the backside so they can get to a traffic light. So I would ask that signage be placed no left turn, but to direct them to the back so they can get to a light, a traffic light. I think that would solve a lot of traffic congestion. We just went over another subject property on Maple Street, and I had the same concern. You don't want to have people stopping quick, it can create an accident. So the other business was saying they're going to try to educate, and hopefully with signage that can also help. If signage could go in to show people that to get to the traffic light, you can go through the back exit. And I think that's going to help your situation as well as the people driving, as long as they know that. We see that down at, with Wendy's down at the Apex, they created certain ways to get in and out of that Wendy's, it's on Route 20 West because of traffic concerns and trying to get out. You can't go out to the left from Wendy's. So same concept is what I would ask that we see. Question, you've got beautiful setup for landscaping, are you planning any seating outside?
No, there's no exterior seating.
No park or anything? All that green space and, people may sit out there, but I'm just curious if you were planning any tables out there?
Yeah, no, no, there's no tables outside proposed.
Our other McDonald's on Maple Street, they put up, talking about signage, they put up signage, and my question would be, the people that decide not to go outside to sit down may sit in their cars, it's very common, and put the music up. I was young once, I might have done it too when I was younger, but they have signage that says no loud music to be played if sitting in your car. So I would ask that that be considered as well, and you can talk to your friendly McDonald's on Maple Street, and they went through the same thing. The only other question I have is, we talked, you talked about drainage. What concerns me is, maybe not, maybe you've done it, have they done any soil evaluation out there to see if the soil's permeable, like beach sand, or if it's tight like clay? Has that been done?
Simply put, in this particular instance, no, because we're not proposing any infiltration. The only infiltration we'll get is from the existing green space and the proposed green space, that'll just, you know, percolate through the grass areas. Everything else will be collected, that's being transmitted into the existing drainage structures and out off a site, so there was no need to do the infiltration test.
I misunderstood you, I thought you said they were going to be settling basins and some drains coming out.
There's going to be deep-sump catch basins which collect the rainwater, then they transmit that to a proprietary stormwater quality unit that pretreats the runoff before it's then discharged back into the system that runs off to the easterly side of the property.
So you're not treating through the soil, you're just treating by holding, versus through the soil? That's where I was confused, but, and our engineer will work with you on that, I just would not want to see backup of drainage. You know, with climate change, we're getting very large storms, so I would ask that you make sure that your site is set up properly for the drainage.
Absolutely.
Outside of that, I may have a few other questions within the Urban Affairs, and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Orem. Councilor Vital?
Thank you, Mr. President. This access road right here, that is not your property, the back side, is that correct?
Yeah, the lease line is going to end right about here.
Do you know who owns that property?
That's our landlord.
Okay, so permission has been granted and everything for having that rear?
Yeah, the landlord owns the remainder of the lot, but we're only leasing this portion.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor Vital. Councilor Preciado?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening. Are you aware of the bike lanes that will be put in place at the end of the driveway for the exit? Once that road, once Route 20 is complete?
We've proposed to continue.
And you, I'm sorry, you've got to be close to them, you can take the microphone out if you want to walk over there, but you have to talk to the microphones, the folks at home can hear you.
That's okay. I can let you answer this if you want to, but we've proposed to continue the sidewalk and to install that new sidewalk along the side as well, but otherwise, we weren't making any changes to, to the front.
Okay, thank you. My concern is with the traffic study being done during construction, I don't know if these numbers would be entirely accurate, and we will also see an uptick, I think, in the amount of cars traveling once the other developments are completed off of Route 20, there's one not so far away from there, so I think I would revisit that traffic study. That's all.
Thank you, Councilor Preciado.
I could respond quickly to that. So we, when we did the study, I will say we went out in the field, and certainly there was some construction activity, but they weren't, there weren't lanes closed, it wasn't as though they were pinching the traffic down to one lane when we did our accounts. We actually, I was involved with a study that was done a couple of years back for a property just to the west of us, where they put a Starbucks and another use in there. And I know at one point, we did look and make a comparison to see how the volumes had, you know, changed since that study was done, and it wasn't a huge difference. So I don't, we can certainly revisit it and make sure that these numbers are accurate, but my recollection is that we looked at the intersection of Descenso Boulevard, what those Pico volumes looked like when that study was done, which was only a couple of years earlier, the volumes are fairly consistent, but we can certainly take another look.
Yeah, the construction has been going on since they built the Starbucks though, right? So it was further down Route 20?
Sure.
I guess that's it, yeah. Well, I completely blanked on the next question I had, it will come back to me.
Any other comments from the councilors? Comments from the councilors? Comments from the councilors? Councilor Roby?
Thank you, Mr. President. So this is in Urban Affairs, the sooner we get at your draft special permit application, which then has to go to the department heads for comment, the sooner we can set up an Urban Affairs Committee meeting to continue the discussion.
And I'll just mention, Anne, if you talk to our City Council Secretary, she will set you up with a sample special permit decision, and you just tailor it to McDonald's and then send that, and Urban Affairs will take that up.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the city councilors? Questions from the councilors? Questions from the councilors? Hearing none, I close that portion of the public hearing, and the entire public hearing in this item is in Urban Affairs. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Agenda item number five.
Now it's the time for the public hearing of the proposed zoning amendments, Chapter 650 zoning relative to medical and adult-use marijuana, Order Number 25-1009351.
I would ask Councilor Roby to come take the podium, please.
Now is the time for the public hearing. The public hearing will be taken in four stages. First, public speaking in favor, starting with the applicant, then questions from the public, public speaking in opposition, and questions from the council. Each person speaking will please approach the microphone and give their name and address. When all testimony is given, we are going to limit the public hearing to three minutes for speakers because of the time. Will the applicant please approach and speak?
Thank you, Madam President. Mike Ossing, 43, Barley Road, Marlboro, presenting to you tonight a zoning change for independent testing labs. So for Mr. Clerk, I'm going to be going quick through these, so you're good to go. All right. So the purpose, to increase the number of independent testing laboratories that can operate in the city. So the change is really pretty simple, the existing zoning ordinance that we have only allows one independent testing laboratory, this change just makes it that we have no more than four. So the change would be striking it from where there's only one, and basically allowing it to limit the number of independent testing labs to four in the city. A little background, the current ordinance allows one, city council approved a special permit for an independent testing lab back in 2019. Those that you were here remember, we had the public hearing, there was no public participation, no one spoke in favor, opposition, council questions were limited to being new at the time, what would an independent testing lab mean to the city? Ultimately, Urban Affairs voted 5-0 to approve it, and the city council voted 9-0 with two absent to approve it as well. The lab, Ares Lab, is no longer operating in Marlboro, they left in 2024. I checked with the police department, there are no police issues with the site at that location. In 2019, when Ares Lab was before us, there were three testing labs, now there's 14 in the state. And the issue is, we have two independent labs that have indicated interest in coming to the city, and based on the performance of the first one, why not two, why not four? These testing labs, there's no traffic, there's no public access to the facility, increases Marlboro's a laboratory slash science destination, brings job to Marlboro, it's good-paying jobs, fills open space, and increases our tax base. So in conclusion, the testing labs can only be located in industrial LI, limited industrial zoning districts, so based, and it's with a caveat, west of 495. City council continues to have special permit granting authority, so anyone that wants to come in for a testing lab has to come before the city council for a special permit. So I would recommend that Urban Affairs look favorably on the zoning change. Thank you, Madam President.
Is there anyone else speaking in favor? Is there anyone else speaking in favor? Is there anyone else speaking in favor? Hearing none, I'll close that portion of the public hearing. Is there anyone with questions from the public?
Good evening, my name is Steve Peck, I live at 64 Victoria Lane here in Marlboro. I am concerned independent testing laboratories generally are going to be some sort of chemical testing laboratories, and I'm worried about how this, the waste products from this lab will influence our septic systems here in Marlboro.
So they're all regulated by the Cannabis Control Commission, they have to get permits for any discharges through our Department of Public Works to enter our sewer system, Steve. And the issues, there were no issues with the one that ran from 2019 to 2024 for five years, they ran with no issues. You're welcome, Steve.
Any other public with questions?
David O'Neil, 24 Arcadia Circle. I'm just wondering, is this kind of like that Quest Diagnostics laboratory facility we're talking about, or like?
No, so these are small, they hire, they're very, probably in a room similar to this, Dave, they hire about 10 people, they just, they take marijuana products from adult-use or medical marijuana dispensaries, the three that we have in town or around the state, and they test them to ensure compliance with potency, no bacteria, no mold. You may have heard in the news, there's been some issues with some of the testing that's been done, that the CCC's been trying to make sure that they're doing it all properly. That's a testing issue, but having them test here, it's really for the quality of the marijuana product that's being sold to the consumers in the Commonwealth, or whoever comes and buys them, actually.
Okay, all right, got it. I got it now, thanks.
You're welcome, Dave.
Are there any other questions from the public? Are there other questions from the public? Are there other questions from the public? Hearing none, this portion is closed. Next up, we have public speaking in opposition. Is there anyone from the public speaking in opposition? Is there any public speaking in opposition? Hearing none, I'll close that portion of the public hearing. Questions from the city council? Councilor Orem?
Thank you, Madam President. The question would be related to the demand, have we heard either through MEDC or any other group that there is a demand out there to look for some quality properties in Marlboro for this type of purpose?
So MEDC's the one that brought this to my attention, they had two applicants, Councilor Orem, and where they would probably go, where they were in negotiations with is working at the same location on Simarano Drive. So we have, there's vacant space down there, so I would assume if they come and get approval before the council, that's where they'd be located.
And you answered my other question, I didn't know if we had 14 others in Marlboro, that's within the state.
I wish we did, but you know.
But I support this based on the fact we're creating good business to come into Marlboro. I can add to the fact on sewer systems that you cannot dispose of any chemicals without trapping it, collecting it, and disposing of it properly through a hazardous waste company. So that would be all taken care of through the Water and Sewer Department, and I don't know of any companies that don't have sewer. I don't believe we have any septic systems for large industries to help with that question that came up. But I support this, especially knowing there has been a request by two others. Thank you. Thank you.
Councilor Dusset?
Thank you very much, Madam President. But, so, one of the comments you're saying is also to reduce it to just the zoning districts west of 495?
That's currently what's in our zoning now, so if you go to the zoning that allows transporters, cultivators, all the, there's a whole host, we just changed the zoning, we can only have them west of 495 in LI or in industrial.
Okay, so that zoning is already in place?
That's correct.
Okay, that's where I was going with this. And again, to agree with Councilor Orem, I think, you know, we weren't sure what was going on in 19, but, you know, the industry has matured to a point where you're getting real, you know, saturated market competition, so more products out there need more testing. So I think it's great that we have an opportunity to get some businesses in here. Thank you.
Other questions from the council? Councilor Preciado?
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, thank you for being here. I was wondering, why did you pick four licenses? Because if those two businesses do come in, that leaves one license left, is there some kind of restriction you have on that?
So the rationale for four was two want to come in, so we had one, one left, so we basically have none right now. So two want to come in, I thought just height, making the number to align with the number of adult and recreational marijuana stores that we have in town is appropriate, if you want to increase it, but the trend is pretty consistent, I'd love to get all 14 in Marlboro, but they're not all going to come here. But to give them the opportunity, knowing two want to, I thought that would be at least a limit for, but I mean, if Urban wants to change it, I'm okay if they want to change something.
Just wondering what the reasoning was, thank you.
If I can throw in there, I don't believe we can change it, but in no event fewer than the number is state law, so it's based again on the census count, it may increase with the future census, but we're limited to four marijuana facilities currently.
Right, but that was just my logic for picking the number, because we're limited to four, if we get enough.
Right, I just meant adding more. Are there any other question, councilors with questions? Seeing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed, and this is currently in Urban
Agenda item number six.
Communication from the mayor regarding notification of extension of temporary appointment pursuant to master general law, Chapter 41, Section 61A of Theater L. Scott as interim commissioner of the Department of Public Works for an additional 60-day term effective February 24th, 4th, February 14th, 2025.
Councilor Navy?
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to accept and place on file.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the gifts, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed? The motion is filed, vote 10-0. Agenda item number seven.
Communication from the mayor regarding gift acceptance in the amount of $34,945 from businesses and individuals, including the Cummings Community Giving, DCU, DuPont, and Celia Corporation awarded to the Fire Department to be used for various purposes as outlined in the attached documents.
Councilor Iris?
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve the gifts, please.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the gifts, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are those in favor? Opposed? Gifts are approved, 10-0. Agenda item number eight.
Communication from the mayor regarding transfer requests in the amount of $626,812.24 from PEG funds to Marlboro Cable Trust to fund the operating and capital budgets of WMCT-TV for fiscal year 2026.
Councilors, I just want to read a disclosure that I filed with the city clerk and the solicitor this afternoon. I'll be participating in the committee discussion as a voting member. My wife Linda currently serves on the Marlboro Cable Trust Committee, which oversees the My wife, Linda, currently serves on the Marlboro Cable Trust Committee, which oversees the expenditures on behalf of the trust to support the cable access services and programming in Marlboro area. Taking into account all the facts I have disclosed, I feel that I can perform my official duties objectively and airly.
Councilor Irish?
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to refer to the Finance Committee, please.
Motion is made and seconded to refer to the Finance Committee. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed. It's going to Finance, 10-0. Agenda item number nine.
Communication from city clerk Stephen Kerrigan regarding request to set Tuesday, September 16th, 2025, as the date of the municipal preliminary election pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 54, Section 103P.
Councilor Brown?
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to accept and place on file communication.
Want to approve it? Motion to approve.
Oh, approve them, yes.
Motion is made and seconded to approve the setting of the date for the preliminary election as to September 16th, 2025. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed. The date for the preliminary election is set. Vote is 10-0. Agenda item number 10.
Application for a tax delivery license from Louise de Lima Gomes, DBA Skyline Limo Service, Inc., to operate a delivery service with one vehicle at 2312 Mayflower Circle.
Councilor Ficillo?
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to refer to the Public Services Committee.
Motion made and seconded to refer to the Public Services Committee. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed. It's going to Public Service, 10-0. Agenda item number 11.
Application for amendment to a special permit from Green Meadows Farms LLC regarding to allow medical marijuana sales in addition to adult-use marijuana sales at a facility, excuse me, to be located at 239 Boston Post Road West.
Councilor Roby?
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to refer this to Urban Affairs Committee, set a public hearing from March 24th, and advertise.
Motion made and seconded to refer to the Urban Affairs Committee. We'll set a public hearing from March 24th, and we will advertise. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed. It's going to Urban Affairs with a March 24th public hearing and advertise.
Votes 10-0. Agenda item number 12.
Communication from attorney Christopher Flood on behalf of Annabelle E. Gilhermos Accor regarding request to extend time limitations on the application for a special permit to convert an existing two-family residential property located at 30 Maple Street to a three-family residential property until 10:00 PM on March 10th, 2025. Order Number 2425-1009298C.
Councilor Roby?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to remind the council, the public hearing on this was held on 12/22, or, sorry, December 2nd, 2024. We have 90 days after the public hearing to act on the decision, which would be March 2nd, which is a Sunday, so it becomes March 3rd. Our next council meeting isn't until March 10th. So there was a formal request to allow an extension so that the solicitor and the petitioner's attorney can work together on some legal issues that the city attorneys have, and hopefully we can have this be on our agenda for March 10th. So I move to approve the request for the time extension until March 10th.
Motion made and seconded to extend the special permit timeline to March 10th, 2025. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed. The special permit timeline is extended to March 10th, 2025, and the vote is 10-0. Agenda item 13.
Minutes of boards, commissions, and committees.
Mr. President? Councilor Dusset?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Motion to accept and place on file. The minutes of the boards, commissions, and committees.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file. All the minutes. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed. The minutes are filed, 10-0. Agenda item 14.
Claims.
Councilor Brown?
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to, move to send the claims to the Legal Department, please.
Motion made and seconded to send the claims to the Legal Department. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed. Claims are going to Legal, 10-0. Reports of committees. Who wants to go first? Councilor Roby?
Make mine short. The Council Urban Affairs and Housing Committee met on February 19th. We had one item on our agenda, Order Number 24-109317, an application for a special permit for Marlboro Maple Real Estate Trust for a drive-through window in an existing building to add a cafe at 420 Maple Street. We had the applicant, Charlotte Maynard, who's the owner of the property, Margaret Stevens, who's the property manager, and Christian Barrigan, the owner of the proposed cafe. The chair opened the meeting, stating members received a copy of the transcript of the public hearing, comments from the department heads, and an emailed copy of the site plans. She started reading through the review of the draft decision, and amendments were made as follows. In the findings of facts, there were suggestions to change the information about what was received. In the conditions, number seven, hours of operation, we are amending the hours. In condition eight, traffic signage, we are amending to strike currently located at the site. In condition nine, parking areas, amended to read as requested by the, I believe, Priscilla Ryder, and I won't read the details because you all have the copy. Condition 13, lighting, was also amended, and condition 14, landscaping, was amended. Condition 17 is a question for the city solicitor as to whether we keep the language or amend it. Councilor Navin moved to approve the application for a special permit for a drive-through window in an existing building to add the cafe. The motion carried 4 to 0. I am asking, and it's not specified here, but I am asking for a suspension to have this be referred to the solicitor to be put in proper form.
There's a request for suspension of the rules. All those in favor of the suspension? Opposed. Suspension carries, 10-0. Councilor Roby?
Move to refer this to the solicitor to be put in proper form.
Motion is made and seconded to refer this item to the solicitor to put in proper format. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed. This is going to the solicitor. The vote is 10-0. Councilor Navin?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. The City Council Personnel Committee met on February 19th at 7:30. All voting members were present and joined by councilors Osing, Ficillo, Irish, Roby, Oram, and Preciado. We had four items on the agenda, beginning with Order Number 25-109359, communication for Mayor Dumas with the appointment of Brian Dahany as the city comptroller and treasurer for a three-year term effective March 31st, 2025. In addition, pursuant to Chapter 125, request to start date, request, excuse me, Mr. Dahany to start at step seven of the comptroller-treasurer salary schedule and grant additional weeks' vacation. Chair read the letter from the mayor dated February 6, 2025, as well as roles and responsibilities of the comptroller's office. Mr. Dahany spoke about his background and his professional experience in the city of Pittsburgh, his prior tenure in the city of Marlboro, and most recently in his role as town administrator in Ashburnham. As much discussion from the council regarding the gratefulness of Mr. Dahany to return, as well as appreciation for some of his prior successes he had with the city. President Osing spoke about the importance of the role, scope of the tasks that are overseen by this position, and the successful efforts that Mr. Dahany led during his previous tenure, including Marlboro achieving its AAA bond rating, enacting responsible and common sense financial policies and procedures, union contract negotiations, sound capital planning, and transparent bond repayment schedules. He strongly recommended the approval of the mayor's appointment, a motion by Councilor Dusset, seconded by the chair, to recommend the approval of the appointment of Mr. Dahany. I will be requesting a suspension as the committee looks favorably upon it at the end of this report. Next up was Order Number 25-109360, communication from Mayor Dumas with the appointment of Douglas Philpott to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a five-year term set to expire from the date of city council confirmation. Councilor Brown spoke about the importance of the ZBA and commended Mr. Philpott for already attending meetings for his new role, and asked him if he would be comfortable in speaking with the public about such issues that come before the board and voting in the negative when necessary. Mr. Philpott responded that he would, and on a motion by Councilor Brown, seconded by the chair, to recommend the approval of the appointment of Douglas E. Philpott to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a five-year term set to expire from the date of city council confirmation. The vote was 3 to 0. Next up was Order Number 25-109361, communication from Mayor Dumas with the appointment of E. William Baker to the Community Development Authority as the tenant representative for a three-year term set to expire from the date of city council confirmation. Chair read the mayor's letter, as well as the roles and responsibilities of the CDA. Mr. Baker has been on the Tenants Association for five years and the secretary for the last three. He has a background in procurement and served as the vice president of procurement for Citibank. Mr. Baker will replace Mr. Paul Slaney, who has served as the tenant representative on the CDA for the past 10 years. On a motion by Councilor Brown, seconded by the chair, to recommend approval of the appointment of E. William Baker to the Community Development Authority as the tenant representative for a three-year term set to expire from the date of city council confirmation. And finally, we took up Order Number 25-109362, communication from the mayor with the appointment of Ann Miken to the Council on Aging for a four-year term set to expire May 7th, 2029. Again, the chair read the letter, as well as the roles and responsibilities of the Council on Aging, and on a motion by Councilor Dusset, seconded by the chair, to recommend approval of the appointment of Ann Miken to the Council on Aging for a four-year term set to expire May 7th, 2029. And then on a motion by Councilor Dusset, the committee adjourned at 8:15. With that, I'd like to request a suspension of the rules so that we can take up Order Number 25-109359.
The motion for a suspension of the rules. All those in favor of the suspension? Opposed. Suspension carries, 10-0. Councilor Navin?
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to approve Order Number 25-109359, the appointment of Brian Dahany as city comptroller treasurer for a three-year term effective March 31st, 2025. And in addition, pursuant to Chapter 125, request that Mr. Dahany start at step seven of the comptroller-treasurer salary schedule and granted, be granted one additional week vacation.
Motion made and seconded to approve the appointment of Brian Dahany to the comptroller with the step seven and additional week vacation. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed. It is approved, 10-0. Any other reports of committees? Councilor Irish?
Thank you, Mr. President. Public service announcement, Finance Committee will meet on March 3rd, 2025, at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Any other reports of committees? Seeing none. Agenda item 15.
Order Number 24-109191, capital improvement plan for fiscal year 24 to fiscal year 28. Recommendation of the Finance Committee is to file.
Councilor Irish?
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the recommendation of committee to accept and place on file.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed. The items filed, 10-0. Agenda item 16.
Order Number 25-109350, mid-year transfer request totaling $928,828 from various departments for fiscal year 25. Moving funds from and to accounts as outlined in the transfer sheets, and the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve.
Councilor Irish?
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the recommendation of committee to approve the mid-year transfers, please.
Motion made and seconded to approve the mid-year transfers. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed.